Oh, there he is. There he is. I see him up there. Okay. Okay, no, just a high five to keep an eye for. Kevin, if you want to say something, just wave really well.
Hello. Okay. I will do that.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to our Committee of the Whole meeting for the twenty fifth of November twenty twenty five. Any declaration of your interests in nature thereof? Being done. Adoption of the open session agenda, be it resolved that the Committee of the Whole is hereby approved of the open session agenda dated November twenty fifth twenty twenty five is presented. Could I have a mover and a second or councillor Eastman and seconded by Deputy Mayor Wiggins? All in favor, please? So pass. Thank you. Minutes of the previous session be resolved that the Committee of the Whole is hereby approved of the minutes of the Committee of the Whole meeting held on October twenty eighth twenty twenty five is presented. Could I have a mover and a second there, please? Councillor Miles and councillor Mullet? Any comments or questions on that? Seeing none, all in favor, please. So pass. Thank you. Item six, consent agenda. There isn't one. Item seven, economic development wrap-up report for the Jamboree. I'll put the motion on the floor, be it resolved that the Committee of the Whole for the town of Bancroft receives the twenty twenty five Rockhoun Jamboree Report for information and discussion purposes only. Could I have a mover and a second there on that, please? Moved by councillor Eastman and seconded by the Deputy Mayor and Andrea.
Thank you, Mayor Jenkins. Okay, so we've been asked to do a wrap-up report for Jamboree of twenty twenty five. So we've done that. We've compared some attendance here for the last couple of years, as well as some revenues and stuff. I won't read the whole thing to you, but I'll go through it really quickly. On the first page of the report, you will see the attendance for both child, youth, and adult gate attendance. This is adjusted attendance to reflect people who attended on multiple days as well. So if someone bought a four-day pass, we included them four times as actual visitors to the show because they were there for four days, as opposed to one day. So based on those numbers, you can see that each year we have increased the number of attendees fairly significantly. The biggest increase year over year is in the child, youth, which is really important for the future of the show. If the children and youth aren't coming now and making memories, they're not bringing their children and grandchildren in a few years. So building that customer base now helps to ensure that the show has a good audience base in the future as well. And then we have had increases in our adult attendance as well. You know, we're up about one hundred and eighty people this year for adults, so overall, really good, but we've topped eight thousand visitors two years in a row. Please note that this does not include the vendors. There are roughly a hundred vendors, each of whom have between two and six attendees at their booth. So even if we only do the two, that puts over ten thousand people at the show each year, in addition to our own staff, the restaurant and food vendors, and all of those folks as well. So it's a it's a really big event for us. Revenue-wise, our revenues, I would say, are expenses each year. We have approximately, pardon me, thirty thousand dollars of profit each year, a little bit under that in twenty twenty four and a little bit over that in twenty twenty five. There are still a couple of small bills to come in this year that we are waiting for, so that number as of today for twenty twenty five will drop a little bit, but not substantially unless there's something we've all forgot about, but we're pretty good at keeping tabs on what's coming in for those things. So really wanted to highlight the the spending. So there's different models you can use online to give you an idea for the type of event you're running, what kind of economic impact that event has on the community. All of those models show that this event has at least a million-dollar impact on the North Hastings economy, primarily focused in our community. So that is really, really huge for our businesses and our residents through the year. Of course, the biggest impact is visitor spending. When those folks come to town, they grab a bite to eat at a restaurant the night before, or they do a drive-through, or they pop into one of our local shops or boutiques to look for a souvenir. They might take in a show. You know, there's there's always lots of things going on, so they definitely contribute. You'll also notice in some of the slides later on that I I believe it's about twenty-five percent, about a quarter of the people who attend the show stay in accommodations, either a hotel or an Airbnb or with family or friends. So that's also a significant contributor. Local benefits to the show, of course, merchants in Bancroft really rely on that weekend to increase sales and and put some money in their bank account in preparation for the long cold winter ahead. So it's really important for them year over year as well. Our actual expenses, even though they're expenses for us, many of our expenses are expended in our community. We rent local venues and pay rent to local service clubs for the the show locations. We purchase supplies from local companies to make the show work. We purchase advertising from the local radio station and the local newspapers. So our contributions through expenses also support our community for the event, along with the wages that we pay to the folks who work on those weekends, which are all local residents who put the majority of that money back into our community as well. And then finally, we did receive funding, promotional funding this year through Experience Ontario, and we were named one of the top one hundred festivals and events in twenty twenty five as well. Those those things help to drive knowledge about the show across a greater audience and spectrum and and hopefully draw people from across the province and across the country to the show in the future, building it, building upon it for year over year. This year, we did do a QR code, which we posted around the buildings, which we had pretty good feedback to, actually. And some of the results of those are on the following slides. You'll notice that pretty much everyone visits all three locations. So that's good. We know that if you come to the Curling Club, you're probably going to the Swappers area and to the arena as well. So it's nice to know that all three venues are getting a relative proportion of visitors. The things that people are interested in, we wanted to know why people were coming to the Jamboree. And of course, you know, we've got our rocks at twenty percent and our gems at fourteen percent and our minerals at thirty percent. But people are also interested in the fossils and the speakers, and so it was nice to hear those things as well, that they're not just looking for rocks. They are coming for the educational and historical things that the show presents to them as well. As I noted, twenty-six point seven percent stayed in accommodation during the show. So, you know, two thousand of those eight thousand people stayed here somewhere, whether it's Airbnb, or they stayed in the motels, or they filled a campground. You know, they were here, and that's that's a significant contribution to our economy. A little bit of information there about different places that people came, that people said they came from. This is not an exhaustive list. It's just the responses that were received in the in the visitor survey. Who's coming? So you can see from the demographics, you know, who's coming to the show. So we are working at building that under eighteen a bit more because those folks will soon move to the next category. We want to continue to have those big spikes in those adult age ranges. So as people get older, we need to move them on and and build that love of the show. Highest level of education, mostly just for interest purposes, but lots of people that were there just have a high school education. So it isn't just catering to folks from colleges and universities who have an interest in paleontology or geology or any of those other ologies associated with rocks and minerals and gems and, you know, it's it's a diverse crowd. Food options, everybody has their opinions about food, but generally speaking, people were happy. They'd like more variety, or they brought their own. You you can't have five hundred different kinds of food, which is how many you'd have to have to satisfy all five hundred people. So it's not a bad outcome, but we are continuing to work towards diversified food options wherever we can. And then the presentations from this year that people found most interesting, not surprising, was Tim Jeffries and the giant dinosaur. So that was pretty awesome to have, but some other really good ones as well. You know, we had a lot of great presenters this year, and it's nice to see that they were all recognized, you know, ten, 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 ten. You know, so a lot of people were going to see those those different things as well, but T-Rex definitely stole the show this year, and we know that the kids were absolutely enthralled with that presentation. So again, trying to build that base and grow that future paying visitor to the show by attracting things that make the show interesting for them now and build those memories. So that's it. Just wanted to give you that update, let you know how how the show has gone and how we anticipate that it'll go, and give you some of the feedback from the people who attend the show.
Thank you. One, I have one question. The grant money we received, you say, was from Experience?
Experience Ontario.
And what was the amount that we received on?
Nineteen, just over nineteen thousand dollars this year.
And have we received that every year?
No. No. We, later on, you will have a grant resolution here to apply for the intake for next year. We have applied in the past and not been successful. It's an extremely competitive tourism grant, but we're going to give her a go again, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other councillor?
A couple of quick questions if I can. The nineteen thousand grant, is that included in in the expenses and profits?
I'm not sure. Yes, it is. Yes, I did add it in there.
So like, if you look at that, like, we made twenty-eight thousand a year. Did we have a grant that year too?
We did.
That's in there.
Some of the grant does go in there, yeah.
That's, the other one is, does that expenses include all our staff time?
Yeah.
And on it?
That's all our wages or staff time.
The other thing is, is there any way, I looked at your map of where the visitors came from, and it's all pretty well Ontario, a little bit of Quebec. I wonder, I'm surprised there's not more from upstate United States. Is there any way we can reach out to that?
So we know that there were people there. The museum has a list of where people came from. The county collects a list of postal codes and pins. We know that there were people there from Portugal and from Australia. They just didn't participate in the survey.
I was more concerned about like New York State and Michigan and the ones that are fairly close. I didn't know if we could add.
Do you look at the pin map that the county had? You could see the pins in those locations.
It was, okay. I'm taking another, like, the rally at Tallpines. They come from all over.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And a big chunk of the grant that we did get last year was advertising. We spent over thirteen thousand dollars on advertising, because that's what the majority of that grant was earmarked for. We did advertise specifically in, is it Rock and Gem Museum? Magazine, which is a new, a border state production. It is a US magazine, so that we were promoting there as well.
The other, the other thing, and I'm not sure if we did or not, but I'm wondering if we should share these statistics, I guess, with our neighboring municipalities? Because they certainly benefit from the Jamboree. They're part of this, so it might be interesting. I'm thinking if if they seen this, that possibly they would step up to the arena, maybe? It might be interesting that they say, like, bed and breakfasts and restaurants and whatever. It's it's not just Bancroft. It's the area again, so.
And and I can confirm firsthand from having to work with vendors trying to find a place to stay that every rentable place between here and Highway Seven and here in Berry's Bay is rented for the Jamboree for that weekend. So it it isn't just confined to Bancroft. It it is a vast regional.
And and I think that that could be shared with our neighbors. It's my opinion.
And a councillor Eastman?
Oh, your microphone, councillor Eastman.
Sorry, sorry, wasn't on. Congratulations to you and your staff for excellent event. It was was well-attended, as far as I'm concerned, and I just want to point out, too, that having the transportation there is is an excellent idea. I mean, like, it's it's not reflected anything, but, you know, it's just part of the overall package. Like, it like, it sort of grooms what we have, you know, so.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor, except for, thank you. Item eight, administrative agenda. There's one, two, three, four, five resolutions here, so I'll just read the first one, and then we'll have the report presented. Be resolved that the Committee of the Whole for the Corporation of the Town of Bancroft is hereby received the grants update report as presented. Could I have a mover and a second or councillor Mullet? And seconded by councillor Miles. So Andrea, if you would go through that parts, please.
Thank you, Mayor Jenkins. Generally, we bring this to council, but we have some tight timelines on some of these grants, so we would like to get committee's approval in principle, so that we can go ahead and complete the applications in time, and then we'll bring the forward, the official recommendation from this committee to council for approval in December. So we have, a number of grants have opened up in the last couple of weeks, all with very short application timelines. So the report is the same format it has been for the the last several, and this seems to work really well for tracking. So I think we'll continue with this report, this style of report in the future, as far as where we're at with grants. As you can see, so far this year, we've been approved for just under ten million dollars of grant funding, with our share being two million of that cost. So it's a pretty good return. We're at about twenty percent, and someone else is paying eighty percent of our bills. We've had a couple of unsuccessful applications, but we have a number that are still pending, totaling three point two million dollars. And if those are all successful, our share of those would be eight hundred thousand dollars. So again, another, you know, hopefully, most of those are grants without a copayment, though. They are they are strictly grant funds. They're not. They don't require a matching contribution. So today, we are looking for approval to apply for four additional grant programs. The first one is the Pothole Prevention and Repair Program. This was just announced a couple of weeks ago. It will be an allocation-based funding from the ministry, but you have to apply for it first to get your allocation. The maximum amount that the province will allocate to any single municipality is thirty-eight thousand dollars. It's it, my understanding, my feeling reading through it is that it's very much once you apply for it and your application is approved and you agree to follow the rules, then the the funding will continue to flow year over year. You don't have to reapply for it every year. You just have to qualify for the allocation once. So anyway, we do want to apply for that. We've also completed and submitted, because I forgot it on the last report, an application for Connecting Link eleven. We talked about it, but I didn't actually capture it in the report. This is for the rehabilitation of Mill Street from the intersection of Bridge Street all the way out to the Fishing Game Club, which is where our Connecting Link ends. We have some issues there with guard rail, guardrails along the river with some riverbank that's eroding a little bit and falling in. So we want to do some bank stabilization, fix a couple of wowes in the road, for for lack of a better term, and then a shave and pave on the the whole thing, repave the whole road. So we have applied for that one because the grant was required last week. If we're successful and accept the grant, our share of that would be three hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars of the three point three million dollar grant. So that's a ten percent contribution. We also want to apply for the Annual Canada Day Celebration Grant. We typically receive between five and seven thousand dollars a year to support that event. So that that reduces the cost that the town pays to to have that annual celebration. And then Experience Ontario is the one that we just spoke about with regard to the Jamboree, and we would like to apply for that as well. We're looking and costing out a couple of different things, but we'd like, we think this year we'd like to focus on some easier-to-use, portable, newer, built-in-the-last-twenty-years-audiovisual and sound systems for the presentations, to enable virtual presentations by presenters, as well as in-person to have better speeches and microphones to share information across the venues. You know, wireless mics instead of being stuck on a four-foot or a six-foot cord type of a thing. So we think that's probably where that grant is going to focus this year, is on enhancing the technology piece of the event, which may bring other opportunities to it in the future. So we are looking for approval to continue forward and submit all of those applications. All of those are due before our council meeting in December, which is why they're on your agenda today.
So I do have one question with respect to the Connecting Link, which I know we've already applied for. So with the pending coming back to life of the Fountain Hill Project, which is going to involve some work on sixty-two, how do we, do we need to incorporate that? Do we need to be cognizant of that, or do we just do her, you know?
And maybe I'll defer that one to our infrastructure manager.
And just to be clear, we haven't seen any plans yet, but they are supposed to be coming, so.
Yeah, yeah, as far as the Fountain Hill Project, with the the, what we applied for for the Mill Street, it would just be a changing of the curb, where where their road would go in. They would still be responsible for building the road that would go up into the actual subdivision. So by the time we get to actual construction, if we if we're successful, it'll be at least, like, next year will be design, stage, and the year after. So hopefully, we'll know more from them at that time, get some input.
So we could incorporate all the curbs and everything that we need.
Absolutely, so they won't have to remove.
Go back and ripping everything up again.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you. And I guess the only other comment I've got, when you talk about all of these grants, it really shows you that there's no such thing as a free lunch, because our portion so far is up to three million. I think you mentioned, you know, here. So, yes, while we got, it might get ten or thirteen or whatever, we still have to contribute a fair chunk, you know. While the percentage is, you know, somewhere between twenty-five and thirty percent on most of these, it still adds up to a good chunk of money that we have to come up with, so. Just something we need to be cognizant of, so.
With regard to the Connecting Link one, we do have a bit of a reserve that we started to build last year from those Connecting Link funds. We anticipate that we will have some more to add to that reserve this year. Like Jake said, it's a two-year build, so it's quite likely that we'll have sufficient funds in a Connecting Link reserve to cover a portion of that build, if we're success.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Councillor Eastman?
It's disappointing, of course, all three are unsuccessful applications, but just a minor, I guess, comment about the Community Emergency Preparation grant. Like, that's drone expenses. Like, to me, that was, there's so much needed, would it would have saved a whole bunch of money and time and effort and and expense for the town if we were able to know what that water and dam was like above there last year. Like, it just was, like, like, how much was that grant applied for?
It wasn't a substantial amount. It was the cost of the drone and the cost to train, I think, four or five pilots to run it. So it it wasn't.
Sorry, which grant is this?
It's on the unsuccessful grants, the Community Emergency Preparation.
The smallest one probably of all three.
Yeah, it it wasn't a real big one, but it it was declined. Now, that was the intake from late last fall that we found out about this year. We have applied to that again for emergency signage this year to see, you know, in the event of a flood or a fire and evacuation, so that we have signs at key locations to be able to share information with the public. So we'll see if we do any better this year.
Mayor, do you know of any other municipality in Hastings County that has a drone? The gentleman, the the, the, the warden, he was up here from Sterling. He, we, we just had that emergency at the time he was here.
Right.
And we had talked about a drone at that time, and he thought that might be a good idea, maybe for the county even to purchase one.
The county has a drone. The EMS has a drone, for sure.
Do they rent it?
Uh, not, I'm not sure if they would, if they rented, or they would respond, you know, if we did have a situation, they would respond to us. But again, you know, depending on the timeline, they're, they could be somewhere else. You know, the drone sitting, you, I'm not sure what station holds it, if it's the Belleville Station or the Sterling Station, or
Sure.
which particular one holds it. But, you know, something I can for sure ask about and.
But I'm sure the Beavers are building that up, that up again.
I do see Pat's online, although I'm not sure if he's able to chime in, but I do believe that the Fire Department does have access to a drone and some trained pilots now as well, so.
Excellent.
I I think we have that resource available to us at this time. I know a couple of our community partners have also recently purchased drones and completed drone training, who have said if we ever need anything, that they're willing to support us with that as well. So I think we do have some local options.
Thank you.
Oh, there's Kat.
There you go. Chief, would you like to comment, please?
So, Your Worship, we did, through a partnership with our operating budget this year and the Fire Association, we did purchase our own drone here. We just took possession of it here late October, first of November, and we've done training on it with six pilots. So we're still in the early stages of getting accustomed to having that tool in our resources for emergency response for forest fires, flooding, just to give us situational awareness at fire events, all that sort of stuff there. So we did purchase that jointly with our firefighters' association and and through some of our funds from our operating budget this year. As we didn't get the money from the emergency management grant, but our firefighters felt it was a valuable tool and partnered with us, so basically kind of replaced the emergency grant with some of our fundraising money from our fire associations to have that tool in our toolbox, so. So, yep, you'll probably start to see it out and about in the community.
Great. Well, there you go. Thank you. Councillor Miles?
I make the assumption these are a blend of feds and provincial. Do you think that somewhere on our chart, you could have just a little Fed P somewhere in there that would tell us which is which? I'm assuming something Ontario is pretty straightforward, something Canada is pretty straightforward, but some of these other ones, just as a curiosity, and maybe for, as the, our constituents have an understanding that we have, we are applying to two different parties when we get support.
Yep, I can absolutely do that. I can confirm for you that today, the the four that we're asking for your support for are all provincial grants.
Okay, so the, we had the motion to to receive the report. All in favor, please? Thank you. So pass, and I'll read the individual resolutions for the individual grants. First one is be resolved that the Committee of the Whole for the Corporation of the Town of Bancroft is hereby recommend that council direct staff to apply for the Connecting Links eleven program twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven, and complete all associated activities with the application as required. A mover and a second on councillor Miles and deputy mayor, all in favor of that, please? Thank you. Second one is be it resolved that the Committee of the Whole for the Corporation of the Town of Bancroft is hereby recommend that the council direct staff to apply for the Pothole Prevention and Repair Program and complete all associated activities with the application as required. Mover and a second there, please. Councillor Eastman and a second there, councillor Mullet, all in favor, please? So pass. Thank you. Next one is be it resolved that the Committee of the Whole for the Corporation of the Town of Bancroft is hereby recommend that council direct staff to apply for the Celebrate Canada Grant Program and complete all associated activities with the application as required. A mover and a second there on that one, please. Deputy Mayor and councillor Miles, all in favor, please? So pass. Thank you. And last, be it resolved that the Committee of the Whole for the Corporation of the Town of Bancroft is hereby recommend that council direct staff to apply for the Experience Ontario twenty twenty-six Grant Program and complete all associated activities with the application as required. A mover and a second there on that one, please. Councillor Eastman, deputy mayor, all in favor, please? Just one last question. Andrea, are there any other tourism grants that are out there that we can apply that are directed, say, towards the Jamboree?
None that I'm aware of at this point. I understand that there will be another, used to be the Red Grant, I know, I think it's Rod now, that that will be reopening in the spring, and there may be a tourism component in that, but not specific to Jamboree at this point.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to our next item. Item B is social media engagement update. Resolution for is be it resolved that the Committee of the Whole received the social media engagement update report for information purposes only. Could I have a mover and a second there, please, to put that on the floor? Councillor Mullet and councillor Miles. So Sarah, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Your Worship. So good afternoon, everyone. I'm here again. As I promised, I would come back in three months to update you on how we're doing in our social media. So you have the report and some visuals that I pulled off. Luckily, Facebook does a lot of work for us and Instagram does and gets those kind of results for us. So both of the social media platforms, and the biggest difference is we have completely ensured that we're utilizing Instagram more in this, in the next, in that last three-month period. You will see from our Facebook performance, we are pretty much in the last three months reached almost half a million people, half a million views of our different social media posts, content, and those types of things. I know Mayor Jenkins likes to do his lovely long videos, but we will see that most people only watch for three seconds. So that's kind of one of the goals I have in the next little while, is to really try and come up with different content that it's going to catch in that first three seconds, because I'd rather have twenty-six thousand people say, see what we're saying than only twenty-seven hundred. So. than only 2,700. So I'd rather have, uh, those pieces. So we've had a lot of page visits as well. Um, our new follows are not increasing exponentially. That is something that we'd like to work on through our Facebook. Um, our gender split on Facebook is primarily women, um, but we still have a strong following with the men. Um, the top content currently was our last round of, uh, hiring in our works and roads department. Uh, 30,000 people saw that. So I think we've hit the content and people have seen that. So if we were looking for, you know, we are reaching who needs to be reached. Um, and we know that's beyond what our, uh, demographics and numbers are for the, our little town of Bancroft. So our Instagram performance, of course, is going to show a 800% increase because we weren't doing it before. So, um, which is great. Um, we've had lots of profile visits. We've had a better content of, uh, increase in follows. I'm still analyzing the differences, um, with our demographics. Um, as I overanalyze the situation of Facebook, it tends to be an older demographic following, whereas Instagram is a bit of our younger following. So they, the differences in what they like and what they don't like, because I am sharing at the same time, like you can cross post and cross share. Um, we may want to, looking at those pieces is definitely target a different, different types of content as we move forward. Um, what's working on both platforms are utility service posts, community updates that sustains our engagement. Um, the biggest thing is, is this is all with zero dollars spent on Facebook advertising or um, Instagram. We are not paying for anything. Uh, most of you know, you know, they give you that option, would you like to make this an ad? Would you like to make this the, a thing? We are not doing that. These are a hundred percent organic, a hundred percent, um, done internally. Um, at this point, if we wanted to increase by any bigger exponential, we would have to start to invest to kind of expand our reach. Um, so there is, uh, you know, no financial cost, um, that's been associated with this other than, you know, time, energy, me bugging people for pictures, um, and those types of things. Um, I don't, I mean, all the views are on here and all the information on the report if you want to, but I mean, um, as I said, we have increased everything totally organic and we continue to kind of meet the needs and, and do those pieces. Any questions?
So just a comment. So the demographic information that you're showing of, uh, Facebook versus, um, Instagram, pretty typical of what's going on in the
Hundred percent.
Facebook is, it really.
Personally, who at the table has Instagram?
Yeah.
And which, which demographic do we all lie in? Most of us, we all, but we all come work Facebook.
Yeah.
Um, so.
If you're targeting the younger audience, what, what about TikTok and moving to other?
TikTok is a very, very scary platform and I would not think that that would be a risk that the municipality would want to entertain at this point. I think if we are going to utilize video, I think we would look at expanding and putting video and utilizing our YouTube channel. Um, it's much safer, it's much those types of things. We could increase short videos and Instagram reels, um, which would be kind of hitting those kind of short snippet thing, but TikTok has the potential. Personally, I would want to utilize the youth engagement and utilize their expertise in this, um, as they're aware of that, but I'd want us to do a deep dive on the risk related to TikTok, um, as well.
Because that is more of the youth platform today is TikTok, so.
Short, any kind of short impactful grabs is what's, you know, it's what's for the younger generation. I mean, we all do the scrolling, but they're notorious, but, um, you know, there are ways to do it a different way without using, um, that platform. You can use, you can use the Instagram reels for feature, you can use YouTube shorts and those kinds of things as well.
So the only other comment we, that I'd like to make is no matter what we use and no matter how many we use, we're not ever going to reach everybody.
Nope.
Because we do hear comments from people, uh, you know, when we have something occur that, uh, they didn't know, we didn't inform them, et cetera. Uh, and when you go through the list of things that we tell them, how we posted, whether it be on our website or on Facebook, or even the fact that you got the notice in your tax bill, you know, in the old fashioned paper way. Uh, they, they say, well, I don't read that, et cetera. So I think we just have to realize no matter what you do, you are not going to reach, uh, anybody who doesn't choose to, to look for information.
And I think we've had that discussion is whose role is engagement, right? Who is, who, is it up to us to communicate to them? But communication is a two-way.
Yeah, they have to look.
They have to seek it out.
They have to.
Um, and we could implement every strategy in this world. And as Andrew said about the food vendors, no matter how many things we do, there'll still be people who choose to not access those things.
People have to seek it out and find out what the avenues are.
And what their responsibility is, and that is their responsibility is to take more action and to take those pieces.
To be engaged. I agree. I agree. So, but you know, we all hear that. Counselor Miles.
Um, I'm, I wonder, uh, when we start to roll into next year, when we specifically have events like the jamboree or, uh, you know, the Tall Pines Rally, those really advertising on YouTube or on Facebook is actually relatively inexpensive.
Extremely inexpensive.
Be extremely targeted. So as, uh, you know, the deputy mayor mentioned, you know, you got the upper state of New York, you can go in, advertise the event, you can tell it exactly what kind of locations you want to go to, you can give it specific words that you think those people might, I wonder if, uh, there's room maybe for some consideration for some, for, I don't know, pick three events or something that we actually give a stab at using some Facebook advertising. I like the part that it's free. I'm not suggesting we spend a lot of money, but.
We want to grow it and that's kind of what I'm putting on the table. If we want to grow it at this point, we're going to hit a plateau, right? We're going to hit a plateau. So the organic, so I've been doing it through collaboration. So myself and the Tall Pines Group, um, we did hit a lot more, reach a lot more between Ian and Bruce and myself. We communicated back and forth, we cross posted, we shared and those types of things. Both of us, both Tall Pines Rally Club, Rally Sport Ontario, we actually increased our followers from that, right? So our followers in the last, I would say, month have been due to Tall Pines. So by tagging Rally Sport Ontario, by tagging Rally Club, Novus Automotive, all those places we've never, by tagging them and organically doing it that way, we did grow. But I agree, we have to, but they're also sharing us. They shared more love for us.
Yeah.
And tagged us. So it, it goes both ways. So.
And, and it is, it's, uh, the advertising is limited, targeted, inexpensive.
Hundred percent.
It's worth something I think we should take into consideration.
And it's, and when you say limited and targeted, it's less than like two or three dollars to reach tens of thousands of more people. So, um, it is something, as we say, as we plateau, it may be something you want to look at in the future.
Well, thank you very much. It's, uh, great progress we've made on this front. So all in favor, please. Thank you. So number nine, public works, review of minimum maintenance standards. Um, just before I read the motion, just, um, a little, little background on this, et cetera. You know, we've already had our first snowfall. Uh, we've already, um, you know, we passed the minimum maintenance standard, uh, bylaws, you know, some time ago, although and, and I guess the one comment which relates to the budget, the, you know, the budget we're preparing is, is that we were far in excess of our minimum maintenance standards in the past historically, um, unlike a lot of municipalities, because if you were going and reading through Facebook with this snow, snowstorm, you will have seen a number of comments in other municipalities where people were, uh, basically not happy, you know, over various aspects. Uh, one of the ones that really popped up was, uh, plowing of, uh, you know, gravel roads, which when no frost sets in, you know, et cetera, et cetera. So, uh, and you know, we have made a conscious decision this year to, uh, to get closer to the minimum maintenance standards. Um, and for cost-saving reasons, you know, et cetera. So, um, and then the one video I did a little while ago, I tried to, you know, tell people that, you know, we're still there or above, maybe not to the same degree that we were i- in the past, you know, but that's the way it goes. So I'll put this resolution on the table. Be it resolved that committee at the whole is hereby receive the review of the minimum maintenance standard report from the manager of infrastructure and capital projects for information purposes only. Could I have a mover and a seconder, please? Deputy mayor and councillor Eastman and Jake, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor Jenkins, council. Um, just a little background as, uh, winter operations are on underway for the season. Our new winter maintenance policy is in effect and a review of the minimum maintenance standards would be beneficial for everybody. Uh, to find efficiencies in our snow removal operations, the new winter maintenance policy will follow the minimum maintenance standards regarding response times for weekend call-ins. This will reduce labor and fuel costs during the learning curve that will be experienced by our residents due to the reduced service on the weekends. It will be beneficial to know the standards so that information, correct information could be provided. The connecting link will still be maintained and the same level of service as we always do. Um, before I start my presentation, I'd just like to mention, as Mayor Jenkins did, that our operations department does not operate to the uh, minimum maintenance standards, maximum minimums. Our operations strive to, uh, to provide standards that exceed the minimum maintenance standards. Um, I've added some visual aids here. It's, you know, reading numbers from a, a chart, you know, depths and, and size of potholes and stuff. Um, I provided some, uh, visual aids to, uh, when we go through this. Um, this is an overview of the most common minimum maintenance standards experienced by our operations. So minimum man- maintenance standards 101. Uh, the purpose, the purpose of this regulation is to clarify the scope of the statutory defense available to a municipality under clause forty-four, three C of the act by establishing maintenance standards which are non-prescriptive as to the methods or materials to be used in complying with the standards, but in to said, describe the desired outcomes. Is basically to defend against municipal liability. The Ontario government introduced the minimum maintenance standards for municipal highways in 2002. This regulation set out the minimum standards of repair for highways under municipal jurisdiction. So as we go on, there's road classifications. There are six road classi- classifications designed or defined in the minimum maintenance standards. These classifications are based on traffic flow and speed limits on the road. A class one highway is the highest class, 401, while class six is the lowest. Land and road would be an example. We also have a class B in our bylaw, which addresses roads without winter maintenance, such as Eagles Nest Park Road. The next slide. Here's a list of our roads. So as you can see, uh, most of the roads we have in, in the town are a class five road. Uh, we have one class four, which is Detler. Um, all the class three that are located in our municipality are the connecting link. And then, um, the second most we have is, is six. So basically we, we deal mainly with a five and, and class five and class six, uh, road with our operations. So the next is the patrolling, uh, frequency. As you can see, the class of highway is there. Um, a class three highway is once every seven days. Uh, class four is once every 14 days, class five is one, once every 30 days and class six is once every 60 days. We, yeah, we, 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 we exceed these, these numbers. Uh, we use a digital tracking system, uh, mesh to record our road patrols. This system timestamps when a road is patrolled and completed, and it also notifies us when roads are due for patrolling to ensure we are complying with the minimum maintenance standards.
And so if I can, just a road patrol is a dedicated drive-by where the operator is looking for hazards. Are there potholes? Are there trees on the road? Are there missing signs? Is there ice or snow accumulation? So they're doing an actual drive on the road, visual assessment of the conditions on that road at the time of the patrol. So for the highway, for the connecting link, we're only required to do that once every seven days or when we become aware that there's an event happening that is likely to change the condition of the road. Um, we do it more often than that. Uh, we do multiple patrols a week on, um, on, on our highway. Um, we, we patrol weekly on all of our roads. So please don't think that nobody's looking at a class five or a class six road for two months to decide whether or not it needs to be plowed. We're out there weekly, sometimes several times in a week, uh, to check the condition of the roads. Prior to this year, we were doing two patrols per day, one at night and one in the morning and bringing staff in on overtime to complete all of those patrols. Uh, so that's one of the things that has been reduced as a cost savings is we're still doing multiple patrols a week, but we're not doing two every day, seven days a week.
Thank you. Um, so I've handed out, uh, boxes, little square cubes. Um, the next slide is about snow accumulation. Um, these are the guidelines being used for our weekend snow plowing. Plows are not being deployed until this depth of snow has fallen. If these depths are not reached, the roads will be cleared during the next regular shift. So that's a ma- that's, that box represents how deep the snow needs to be before we call our weekend plows out. So if we don't accumulate that much snow over the weekend, our roads will remain unplowed until Monday morning. Because we haven't broken that threshold. That's where we're going to get the savings. We're not the only municipality that's doing that. All surrounding municipalities are doing it as well. Um, so, um.
Just a quick question.
Yeah.
So you're talking about weekends right now.
Yeah.
What about during the week? Is there dip, what's this?
During the week with staffers on, we're doing road maintenance all the time. If, if, like, we go in, we clean the roads up, we sand, we do that.
So that's where you'd be above the minimum standard.
That's where we, yeah, that's where we exceed the minimum
Monday.
Standards is Monday to Friday. Like, we, we get two inches of snow, we're going out to plow it during regular hours, so there's no overtime. It's just standard maintenance for our roads.
So most of these changes with respect to minimum maintenance standards relate to the, predominantly to the weekend?
To the weekend, yeah. It's five, six in our, in, in our operations.
You may lay on a connecting link. We have connecting link operators all weekend long. That's for the class five and six.
Yeah.
Right.
So I, there's a little chart on there as well.
Connecting link is, uh, class three, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
So you still are able for eight centimeters and, uh, 12 hours, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So what's sort of, just so we're clear, what, what's happening with connecting link on the weekend that is that is different?
We have, uh, dedicated overnight connecting link operators who work overnight. So there's always someone at work in that 12-hour period. So if the highway needs maintenance, we always have somebody on paid work assigned to those hours in that 12-hour period.
But we're not required to.
We're not required to, no. We could allow it to accumulate to eight centimeters. That creates other operational
Sure. Just to be clear, this is again where we're above the minimum standard.
We are.
Okay.
Again, what question?
Yes, sure.
Uh, you have, uh, as I say, dedicated on the, uh, connecting link. Um, I'm assuming there's gaps in there in his time schedule, driving up and down the 11 kilometers. Uh, would he be assigned to some of the other main roads in town?
Yeah, he, they also take care of like Station, Station Street Hill, uh, the connecting like some of the, some of the steeper hills, they'll sand, they'll take care of that. Um, they don't get into, they don't get in, into the back streets in town, but the, the main roads like, like Station Street coming up and around, they'll clear that during their, their patrol. And then if there's, um, no snow event and, and no, um, uh, plowing required, they're, they're doing maintenance at the shop with other things.
Yeah, I was more, more concerned like if there's, uh, uh, say two or three inches and they plow the streets and it, and it quits snowing, well, possibly then they could do by the arena, by the hospital, our side roads that are a little higher priority, maybe, maybe. Just didn't know.
Yep, they, they do that. Like, like they, the, our operators are seasoned and, and know the routes in town and what needs to be taken care of on top of the connecting link as well. But in, during a weather event, they're focused on the highway.
Yeah. So just one other question. You sort of alluded to it here when you talked about the Station Street Hill. I, I know in the past there were always certain areas that were hills that were designated to be plowed, like for, for, or sand at first. Has there been, uh, changes there that they would still have the same? They may not be done on the weekend because of this change in the, uh, the polis- the policy?
Uh, correct. Like, like some of the, the, the back streets, like Cleek Street, um, is a good example. Uh, John Street, the, those, those hills are, are now not being, well, they, they were covered under the call-ins on the weekends, which we don't have now.
Okay, just to be clear.
Yeah.
Just to be clear. Yeah. Okay, thank you. Yeah, Forest Hill, uh, even. Well, yeah, we're not banning them. It's, you know. Again.
I, I, it, once, well, once you get into that, you're, you, you can look at the whole
Yeah, the whole town to hill.
Uh, yeah, like, you know, Hall, Hallen Lake Road, Clark Lake Road, you know, there, there's, there's not just in town, there's many roads that have steep hills. Then we get back into the whole, okay, are we calling in the weekends? This is, this is something that we're doing to try and, try and save costs, but we're still within our, um, our liability is still protected.
I, I agree, and, and cost is very important, especially in today's economy, but the, the other thing is safety too. We have to, we have residents that live out on some of these hills and. live out on some of these hills and areas, and they do need to be maybe considered a little bit in the future. Maybe we will need a call-in or something, but.
I, yeah, this will be a good test this year. And, but again, you know, when you look at the amount of dollars that we were spending going over and above where we needed to go, you know. And if you see Monday to Friday, where most people work, they're still being covered by the regular maintenance program. So this is predominantly a weekend.
Weekend cutback, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, like most doctors' appointments and that for the, for the older generation happen Monday to Friday anyway, so, you know. True, yes, true, but. Moving on. Treatment of icy roadways. So when we get into freezing rain events, this gives us a timeline that we need to respond to the ice formation on the roads. This also kind of goes back to the snow accumulation and the type of snow. If we get a wet snow that compacts, it can turn to ice, and that's kind of through the weekend rover patrols and weather monitoring, we may need to call the trucks in to do sanding rather than plowing. So this kind of goes to your point as well. Everybody knows that certain types of snow, there's snow that'll blow off the road, there's snow that just moves around, and then there's snow that'll compact right to ice. So that's something we have to be aware of and through our patrols. So on a Saturday, if if, you know, we get, we get a snowfall, say, on Friday night, and then Saturday morning, you know, traffic's on it, we get a sunny day shining down on it, temperatures drop that, that evening, we could have ice on the roads. So we would deploy our trucks out to, to sand those, those areas. And that all comes through the patrols during the day to make that decision, you know, how things are going to turn out. So through our our highway patrol, like our
Connecting link?
Connecting link, sorry, yes. So, and, and, and we're, we're still responsible for monitoring weather on weekends. We can't, we don't just turn everything off. You know, it's, it's just, it's a balance is really what it comes down to. But we aren't specifically sending two patrols every Saturday and two patrols every Sunday. We're, you know, part of the, the monitoring requirements are watching your weather, watching your temperatures, you know, making those judgment calls. You know, we have operations supervisors that, you know, will make those calls and it's just about making the judgment and using the resources available to do it. So. And if we get, if we do, if that night, on Saturday night, you know, everything freezes over, you know, on, on our roads, we still have, you know, sixteen hours to address that. So by the next morning, we know the roads are slippery that night. We'll send them out Sunday morning to do the sanding, to, to deal with the ice. The ice is treated differently than the snow.
Just a comment. I looked at a few municipalities close by and some far away that contract out services and looked at the tenders, and they all refer to minimum maintenance standards. And I know one municipality that switched from doing it in-house, and then when they tendered it, they went to minimum maintenance standards. And they got a lot of complaints directed towards the private contractor. He said, I'm just adhering to the standards that, you know, I, that were tendered and I'm required to do. So. And I think you're seeing a lot more municipalities go back to this. So you know, the bottom line is, is that obviously we do our best to publicize this, but make sure you have snow tires or don't go out in some of these time periods that, that you, that you don't need to because the costs are just getting so prohibitive. And, you know, as Jake's saying here, and we've all said, we're still at, or at least we're above. You know, we're most definitely still.
Which is great, and we need that for the safety of our residents, of course, but I think it's all weekend, and you're saying like two patrols a day. Well, if it's not a storm, we don't need any patrols a day.
Oh, no, that, I meant what the two patrols a day was what we were doing last year.
Yeah.
We, 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 we don't do that now.
But if we get a storm on Saturday, do I?
We would, we would, we would do a patrol.
Perfect.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and that's what I mean. It's all, it's all the balance of our, our monitoring and our, our patrolling. It all, it all comes together with weather reports and we, we have to be responsive. We can't just turn our backs and say, we got two inches of snow on Friday night and pretend that it may not turn the ice in the weekend. That's not the way it goes.
Well, just concerned because from our latest survey for the the budget, if I remember right, one of the things they didn't want us to change was our road maintenance too much.
They also didn't want a tax increase or as well, so, you know.
Yeah, I realize that, but that's the one thing. As rough as our roads are, they are roads, so.
All right, sidewalks. With sidewalks and snow accumulation, we have forty-eight hours after eight centimeters, which is just a little bit shorter than the boxes. It's about three inches. To clear the sidewalks to a one meter width. We also have a bylaw that requires property owners with adjacent sidewalks to clear it as well. So that addresses it as well.
Yeah, this was a question I was going to ask you, but you brought it up as well. So we have this standard here. We also have the bylaw. So where did the, where does the twain meet? Because technically, if somebody, if in our bylaw, the property owner has to clear their sidewalk, which a lot are not aware of, and I think over the last few years, we've tried to inform them better. If they've cleared it already, then really.
Really, we wouldn't need to go out if everybody did their own. But we, you know, if we got the event that we did get the three inches, that comes back to the patrol. Look what's been going on and then make the appropriate call to get somebody in to clean them. If everybody cleaned off the sidewalks in front of their house, we wouldn't have to call anybody in, but.
Which they're supposed to do.
Right.
Yeah.
I have a little bit of a problem with that. In my, in front of my house, you plow the sidewalk, the road, and it all goes on the sidewalk in front of my house. I have a snow blower, I can blow it back on the road if you want. Where do you want me to do with it? So there's a bit of an issue here.
Well, number one, you can't plow, you're not allowed to shoot it back onto the road, shoot it onto your front lawn, but that's, you're not allowed to put snow out onto roads. That's, you know, under the traffic.
Took my freaking tire away.
Well, I, I think when then we should dictate that it doesn't snow on particular areas, you know.
I don't blow.
Yeah.
All right, so moving on. We got the declaration of a significant weather event. A municipality may declare a significant weather event for snow or ice storms. This allows response times outlined in the minimum maintenance standards to be relaxed until the end of the event. A municipality declaring the beginning of a significant weather event or declaring the end of a significant weather event under this regulation shall do so in one or more of the following ways. By posting notice to the municipality's website, by making an announcement on social media platforms such as Facebook or Twitter, by sending a press release, similar communication to internet, newspaper, radio or television, notification through the municipality's police service, and by any other notification method required in a bylaw of the municipality. So last year, I think we had three significant, two or three? So if we, if we get a big event coming in like last year, was it March, the beginning of March? We, we got those, you know, three feet of snow where it was just impossible to clean up. By making this declaration, we, we've, we've recognized it as a significant storm. We're, we're telling the public not to expect the roads to be up to the minimum maintenance standards. And this kind of gives us a little bit of breathing room in those, those events that, you know, the liability, if we don't meet the standards under this declaration, we, we're not in the same liability as if we don't make the declaration. So.
Where we would most often use a weather event is a major winter storm. This isn't just for regular winter snowfall. This would be, you know, an ice event that's potentially a multi-day. You know, we're going to get freezing rain for two days with massive power outages and we would do our best to keep the highways sanded and open. But last year, I did pull the plows for a few hours because it wasn't even safe for them to be out. We ditched a couple plows and we needed to wait until conditions improved so we could safely send our guys out with chains. So we did, we issued a significant weather declaration. We do post it on the town's website. We do post it on social media. We do send information to the local detachment. Pardon me, and we do our best to get information to the radio station for them to share. That can be difficult on the weekend because they don't have staff physically in the room either, but we do have a whole slew of email addresses for people who work at the radio station with the hope that one of them can pick it up and do an overlay. We've had pretty good luck with that, but we can't guarantee that it gets to the radio. So we do use all of those other methods. And then police are advised. Fire is advised that there's a, a weather event, and they notify all the other emergency services like paramedics and stuff not to travel on side roads or to be extremely careful if they need to.
All right, so moving on, a little bit out of winter maintenance, back into a little bit of summer, but I just want to go over the potholes on the, on the roads. It's always one of the complaints that everybody receives. So this chart is from the minimum maintenance standards regarding potholes on paved surface of roadways. And as you can see, class three, four, five are all a thousand square centimeters and eight centimeters in depth. The only change is the days that we have once we're aware of the pothole to repair it. Now, I put together this here is the largest this here is the largest pothole that we are allowed on our class four, five, or class three, four, and five paved roads, so our tar and chip roads. So that, that would be considered potholes can get that big until we have to repair them. We don't let them get this big on the roads, but that's what the minimum maintenance standards maximum size of a pothole would be on a class three, four, or five road that's paved.
So in your chart here, just so I'm clear, it shows seven, fourteen, thirty days. So that's from the time you're aware of it that you've got to repair it?
Correct, yes. Yeah, so once we're aware of the pothole, which are generally identified on our road patrols, sometimes we get complaints from people, but once we're aware of the pothole, these are the timelines to repair it. So, I mean, it's a pretty deep pothole. We don't, we don't let them get that deep, but I thought it'd be a good visual to see what, what the minimum maintenance standards allows. Yeah, correct. This is legislated, they're legislated minimum maintenance standards. Now this is the size of a pothole on class five gravel road. So as you know, most of our roads are class five. So say, they, Clark Lake Road, now Clear Lake Road. Anything with gravel, that is how deep and how big around the pothole can be. That's to scale. And it's the same, it's the same as before. Our class, we, we don't have a class four gravel road, Detler Road is paved. So we'd have thirty days to repair a pothole this side. Once we're, once we're aware of it, we'd have thirty days. We don't let them get this big and we don't take that long to fix them. So, the next one. This is a class six pothole that we can allow to form with the depth. This is a car swallower. So in the minimum maintenance standards, this is what we would be allowed on a class six, and we would have ninety days to repair this, which we exceed all the time. But I just, I wanted to show where the minimum maintenance standards you, you could drop to without, you know, breaking, being, being in the liability portion. But we, we far exceed our potholes, but, you know, that's just to go to show, so.
Oh, sorry, sorry, Councilman Eastman. Thank you.
I, I view that as looking the opposite around. I mean, got a pothole that big, you don't want to repair it in thirty days.
No, no, we don't.
I know, but I mean, like, we're allowed thirty days till we have to repair it. Like, to me, it's, it's reversed. Like a big pothole like that, I mean.
Yeah. And, and, and it comes down to the minimums. Like, when you look at the patrolling frequencies, if you were patrolling the same as minimum maintenance standards, you can see where it doesn't, and that's where we exceed the, the minimum maintenance standards. We would, we would not let holes get that big in our road that damaged underwear vehicles. But what it does is, you know, if we do have somebody hit a pothole and do damage to their vehicle or, or anything like that, you know, they come and, you know, we get lots of calls, oh, I bent a rim or I bent a tire. We can prove through our, our, our road patrols and the sizes of potholes that we're within the minimum maintenance standards and we're not liable. They have to drive to road conditions. So, like I said, those are extremes, but that's, that's where we, we, we could get to. But we don't. And then the next slide.
Sorry, I think Councilman Muller has a question. Your mic?
In filling the potholes, quite often, even a small one, doesn't last. You don't mean to fill it and in two, three days, it's back. So is there anything we can do better with that?
The, the biggest problem is, is on our tar and chip roads, when we get a pothole and tar and chip, we put coal patch in it, try and, and do it. The coal patch doesn't bond anything because it's on gravel. Like, even, even, even the crust of the tar and chip around is the only real bond with the coal patch. Because the rest is, is gravel underneath. When you get into asphalt, you get a, you know, you always have a good two inches of asphalt regardless, your first lift. Yeah, it bonds more and it tightens more. And, and, you know, we have a tack coat that we use on the connecting link because they're asphalt. But for the tar and chip, there's really, there's really no answer. It's just fill and try and compact, make sure the holes are, are dry. You know, try and get rid of the loose aggregates in it, like stones. But it's just a never-ending story when it comes to tar and chip.
Yeah, because, you know, it's expensive to do and, and it doesn't last. So I'm, you know, I'm just wondering, is there something else to use coming down the line that it may not be, it may not be asphalt, might be something else.
There, there are some kind of bondable green resin that you can put in material to kind of hold it. It's still kind of new and very, very expensive. It's actually more expensive than coal patch. It's more expensive to turn chip to do, I think it's a kilometer, is about seventy-five thousand to do it to a gravel road, but it's, it's, it's a bio resin that holds or organic resin that holds the gravel together and tighter. But I don't know how it'd work on potholes. I, I, it's just a, it's the ongoing battle. It's like, you know.
If I have one more question, maybe I've seen it a number of times, maybe other people have. But in different towns and cities, they have an arm on their plow. And when they go and buy a driveway, they drop the arm.
I've seen them, yeah, as well, yeah. It, it's right on the outside of the plow. And it collects the snow so it doesn't fill in the driveways.
Yep.
We can buy them, give me the money.
I, I, I I have no idea what they're worth.
Yeah.
Make a lot of people happy.
Oh, I've seen the videos of them, and yeah, they work well.
Yeah.
You know, but it's just, it's the costing and, and maintenance of them, and I, I don't even know what it would cost. I have no, I have never looked into it because it's never been.
So some of the videos I've seen on them, the driver's going much slower as well. They have to.
It's more than like the neighborhoods.
Yes.
You know. So I, I can look into the price of them and bring that back, but yeah. So, so, yeah, and then we just have potholes on paved and non-paved shoulders. Here's the chart. It's a little different because they're not in the driving lanes and the timelines, so.
Councilman Eastman.
Quick comment on Councilman Muller's pothole repairs. The addition of our hot patch machine, I think, has made a tremendous help. Like, like they, they, I know going up Newkirk, for example, like the patches they put on last the hang a lot longer than, than the cold patches. And you referred to cold patches, but we do have, we, we spent a few dollars on that hot patch machine, and I think it's, it was well worth it.
Oh, absolutely. That, that, the trailer that we bought, it, it heats up the patch material, which makes it more malleable and it, it fills in the holes. It doesn't, like, any depressions, it more molds the bottom of the, the potholes. And it also allows our guys to compact it better. And it's a lot easier to shovel out and unload as well. So we get more production. That trailer's been an excellent purchase for that, and it's certainly helped with the lifetime of our, our potholes. And, but it's it's like the wily coyote and Roadrunner is just a never-ending cycle when it comes to potholes.
So this is an excellent presentation. Thank you. Really clarifies a lot of things, and I hope we, I'm sure we'll somehow post this or have links everywhere that people can go to and promote it, you know. Because I really think this is really, and I think we need to put some verbiage to it as well about, I know you had your little introduction there about this is what we're required to do. And just like you said, that's not, we do. But people have to become cognizant of the fact that maybe on, you know, Saturday afternoon, if it's snowing, you've got to have a little extra awareness and make sure that you, you know, your vehicle is equipped to go, don't just assume they're. you, you've got to have a little extra awareness and make sure that you, you know, your vehicle is equipped to go, don't just assume they're always going to be cleared. And I think that's part of the message that we need to, uh, to try and get across, you know, so. But this is excellent. Thank you.
Right. Thank you.
Anybody else have any other questions or comments on, on this film? Okay. I will just go, oh, hang on, just give me a second. I knocked myself right out. Hit the wrong button. Yes, go ahead, Uncle.
Maybe I will make a comment about school buses because we have had a lot of comments across, pardon me, uh, not just directed at us, but across uh several municipalities uh, indicating that, you know, the town is preventing children from being able to go to school uh, because of our maintenance on the weekends that's causing school bus cancellations Monday mornings. Um, I just want to kind of set that record straight a little bit. Um, we do have our staff in, they are plowing at six o'clock Monday morning. Um, most of the time, many of the roads where the buses are, are plowed in time for the buses. The calls to cancel those buses happen before we even get here. So even if we called people in at two in the morning, it's not just the town of Bancroft they're looking at. They're looking at all of the regions in the entire busing area and making a decision for all of North Hastings. So we were calling people in at two and three o'clock in the morning to make sure all of those roads were open and salted and sanded and completely passable and buses were canceled anyway. Um, so it's, it's not the town that is causing school bus cancellations to occur, so.
Well, we, we had a perfect example of that just very recently, um, where, um, yeah, the, the buses were canceled and um, I ended up driving somebody to school. Our roads were fine, but that, you know, we have to, you know, as everybody says, it's what's maybe happening out in the back roads, which at this time of year, uh, the, the, you know, like the variation in, in the road conditions can be extreme. So I think the the school, the bus companies cancel for liability, potential liability reasons, and they're looking at the worst case scenario, which may not even be with respect to our in-town operation, you know, so.
And a lot of times it's not our roads.
Yes, not our roads. You know, um, I hadn't, uh, going up the airport road the other day from down below to when you got up, uh, you know, to the top, there was significant difference in the snow accumulation and the road condition just because of the weather this time of year. So yes, you're, it's a very good point. It's not just ours, so. Um, so we had the motion uh before us, all in favor to accept, please. Thank you. That's great. Uh, item ten, there's nothing. Item eleven, there's nothing. Item twelve, other business. Is there anything that folks would like to uh, to speak about? Other business, so. Yes.
If I can, I'd just like to remind everyone that the SoundCloud parade's coming up before our next meeting on the sixth, I believe it is.
Week Saturday, I believe, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, go get out and see the big fella.
Okay, I thought you were going to give another plug for Christmas cakes.
Well, I, I can do that too. I happen to have a couple. Thank you.
Yeah. And uh, you know, as everybody's aware, we had the uh, the rally of the tall pines this uh past weekend and I, I had the opportunity to attend and uh, excellent event, lots of spectators, great weather, you know, and um, and actually just very interesting, I had a gentleman uh come up to speak to me who wasn't uh with the the, the rally per se, but was a rally official that went across Canada to do different events and, and he basically and in North America. And he said to me, this is, as we've heard this before, but he confirmed, he says, this is one of, if not the toughest rally, uh, that, and it's known to be that, so. Um, and they all, he said that, that he always gets questions from people who are considering coming, what tires do I bring? And they just say, all of them. That's their, because you don't know what you're going to get and you actually get changing conditions within, you know, within the rally. So anyway. Uh, our next meeting date for committee of the whole scheduled for January twenty-seven at three P M and a motion to adjourn, please. Deputy Mayor, so thank you, everybody.